As authorized by in accordance, in accordance with the county's continuity of government ordinance, in particular, section six C related to the format of public meetings. This meeting is being held electronically over the Zoom platform. Although the county's board of supervisors declared on March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, the local emergency related to the COVID nineteen disaster has ended. Virginia Code Section fifteen point two dash fourteen thirteen assures the validity of the continuity of government ordinance for up, for up to twelve months after the end of disaster, notwithstanding any contrary provision of law, general or special, while Almar provides for the resumption of normal governmental authority. The public has real time audio visual access to this meeting over Zoom and real time audio access over telephone. Everyone on the phone and attending via Zoom from the public is in listen only mode. The following instructions apply to those who wish to speak during public comment. If you are listening on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature to notify the meeting facilitator. For the way, those joining by telephone, please use star nine to indicate you would like to comment. Tell the board your full name and the magisterial district in which you reside before getting into the substance of your comment. If you don't know your magisterial district, provide a general location for your home or business. The street location or neighborhood name will suffice, suffice. Each speaker will be allowed to more than three minutes to comment. This meeting is being recorded. A copy will be posted on the county's website. And with that explanation, I asked the board members to identify themselves and their general location, and I'll go ahead and call roll. Let's see. Director Walsh.
Um, Bucky Walsh, I'm here, I'm at my home in Almar.
Let's see, Director Jake.
I'm here at my home in Stony Point.
Director Henry.
Trevor Henry at the county office building on McIntyre Road.
Uh, Director Fritz.
Here and I'm at my home in Charlottesville.
And Supervisor Price.
I am present and currently at my home in the beautiful Scottsville Magisterial District.
And finally, let's see, Director Supervisor Andrews.
And I am also at my home in beautiful Samuel Miller District.
So Mr. Chair, we have everyone present, which is a quorum, and so we can proceed.
Richie, thank you very much, and thanks to all the authority members for their attendance and to the members of the public who are here as well. Um, we're going to start out with the approval of the agenda. I trust everyone has received a copy. Are there any suggested changes to it? Hearing none, then uh, let me have a quick motion to approve that. I'll also move in a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Uh, takes us to brief announcements by authority members. Uh, and let me just run down the list here. Jim?
Uh, no announcements this time, thank you.
Donna?
Uh, nothing at this time, thank you.
Uh, Waldo?
Not a thing.
Bill?
Nothing.
And Trevor?
Uh, no sir, nothing.
Very good, we'll move right along. Brings us to the public comment portion of our meeting. Uh, members of the public, if you'd like to address the authority, um, this would be your time to do so. Uh, as Richie said, you'll, you can raise your hand or somehow signal you'd like to do that. And we'll give you a three minutes to say what's on your mind and see if we can answer whatever questions you have or address whatever concerns you bring. Is there anyone who'd like to speak? Looking for a hand raise? Not seeing any just now. All right. Well, let's uh, let's move on then. We'll go to the meeting minutes. Uh, Bill, I didn't see meeting minutes, so.
You didn't miss them, they weren't sent out.
Okay, so we will pick that up next time. And moving right along, item six, old business. The Vadi twenty twenty-one update. Mike?
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to welcome Tommy Garland. He's listening in, so if there's any questions for Tommy, he's doing the field inspection reports for Vadi twenty-one. And we also have Dolores Carroll, who's with Government Affairs of Century Link as a attendee. And I think that's it from Century Link uh, here tonight, so just wanted to update everybody on Body twenty-one. Um, I think Jason may have a PowerPoint, but if he can't get to it, I'll just quickly say that we've gone through a couple of reporting schedules and Tommy's been taking photographs with Jeep, what is called GPS location, so Global Positioning System locations, and he's sent us numerous pictures, images of the locations that are currently underway, which include Tillman and Merryweather. So those two Body twenty-one sites are currently under development, meaning there's a lot of construction in each of those areas, and he's taking photographs and keeping us updated uh, with each of those project areas. The second part of that is just to formally announce that, you know, both the Jonesville Road and Old Guard Heights are closed, so we know there are people um, who have signed up for fiber, quantum fiber, by the way, so just to update Ava and everyone on the, the phone on the call this evening that the new fiber provider company is called Quantum Fiber, so we're, we're working with a different uh, group, um, essentially a different name, same group. Um, so that, that's going well. Good news, on March thirty-first, uh, we'll be opening up the other two projects that are in, in process, that's Snow Hill Lane. Um, and uh, that'll be a huge project that comes along. Um, the only negative news we have is that due to some material being delayed, Gilbert Station Road will be, will be moved out, so we're sort of at the wait and see, unfortunately. So just to, to give you guys an update, that was originally supposed to come in in, in March. Uh, it's now moved to April thirtieth, so Gilbert Station Road is now moved to April thirtieth. March thirty-first will be Tillman and Merryweather, and March thirty-first is also Snow Hill Lane, so we're getting there. Um, here to answer any questions, and I can also bring Dolores on if there are any questions. Have Tommy, um, you know, give you guys an update on, on what he does in the field. Anything that you would like, so that's, that's it for twenty-one. Thanks, Chair. Questions?
We've got a nice slide up now.
Yeah, my apologies, Chair, I'm triple booked tonight, so I'm gonna do my best.
No problem, looks great.
I do have one question. Uh, the delays in materials for Gilbert, Gilbert Station Road, is that any sort of a canary in the coal mine we ought to worry about? Is that a delay of materials that may indicate a larger problem that could affect uh, work going forward?
I'm going to update Ava on what we received from Trish Topanovich today, that the group, the, the product group within Lumen is working on redistributing uh, the material so that they can make that date. And the concerns for the later days, let's look at May thirty-first for Advancemental Road and Fray Road, um, they, and further, um, they are not impacted. So I think it's just a temporary thing that they're seeing, but they'll keep us informed if anything changes. I hope you're, I hope we're incorrect in our same assumption. Um, and we ask questions about that, so we're on the same page, we just need to make sure we stay in touch with them. I don't, I wish I had the means to help um, offset any of their equipment or material delays. Um, but let's just keep, keep on, on track here. Not the, not the answer you wanted, but I promise that it's not going to impact further down the line.
Thank you.
Oh, one last thing, sorry, I just recalled this, we do, you see on the left here, we continue our community meetings Fridays at noon. And last Friday, first Friday of each month. So unfortunately, the first Friday in April is uh, four one twenty-two, April Fool's Day. Um, so we will definitely have a, have a meeting. No one's laughing, sorry. Bad joke, okay. Okay, I got a smile out of Richie, okay.
If there's nothing else.
It was Mike, you went mute.
Any other questions, I guess? Okay.
Okay. Can we move on?
There's a question in the chat from a minute.
Uh, let's see here.
Two and A, I should say.
Ah, Mike, you want to speak to this?
Yes, the North Garden area. Um, and the best way to, the best way to provide input to the broadband authority is to send emails to B A A O at Almar.org. Um, whenever you have questions about where you're located, um, sending an email to B A A O dot at Almar.org is the best way to get really quick answers and will help you. Um, but essentially, this is included, the North Garden area is included in what is called the Sevek Firefly Rise Project, which is a um, Body twenty-two, so Virginia Telecommunication Initiative's twenty-two award. And we'll be bringing fiber to that area sometime between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-five. So please send us an email, we'll give you more details about that project. Thank you for asking.
Mike, do you want to take us on to Body twenty twenty-two?
We have a slide for that one, Jason? Probably not. Um, the, the latest on, the latest on twenty-two is we're awaiting what is called the D H C D contract. We also have Gary, Gary Wood, who's the president of Sevek. Um, and Melissa Gay are both online listening this evening, so if there's any questions for Sevek or Firefly, we can post them to them. Um, but I'll just give you the, the quick, um, you know, a lot of work, just so everyone, just to catch everyone up with where Sevek and Firefly are. A lot of work that Sevek and Firefly are doing in Almar is based on their large membership as a electric co-op. They've promised to deliver fiber to all of their co-op members, over thirty-four hundred uh, co-op members uh, in Almar, so all of those membership locations will be offered fiber by the end of the year. Um, so by the end of twenty-two, everything will be available to the Sevek membership. Now, that hasn't stopped them from going off their system, meaning they will serve people who are Dominion Energy, et cetera, et cetera. We had an example of that with uh, coronavirus relief funds to activate a portion of Burches Creek Road, so we've, we've done some work um, to provide uh, fiber, Firefly fiber to people who are not Sevek members. Um, and with the Rise Project, it's a universal coverage, so everything within the county will be covered through this project that is already served. Um, so there's a lot going on with that. The main thing to remember is that the Dominion Electric, the Appalachian Power, and the Rappahannock Electric Co-op communication between Firefly is based on either a partnership, which is what Firefly has with Rappahannock Electric Co-op and Appalachian Power. In other words, they'll be partnering with them and using their pole attachments, et cetera, to deliver Firefly all the way to the premise with, with Firefly providing what is called the middle mile. With Dominion, it's different. Dominion is not, not really a partner, they're going to be providing service back to Firefly through their middle mile network. Um, so Firefly has to wait for Dominion Energy um, to finish their middle mile project before they start delivering Firefly all the way to the premise, so it's a lot of work that's going on. Um, I think there's some, some challenges with the Dominion Energy work. Um, we'll just have to keep our eye on that and make, make please or please worry. Please hurry up, uh, those types of things will have to happen. Um, it's good to know that, you know, all of Almar County with Sevek members will be provided service by the end of the year. And just the last bit on this is that we have to, the broadband authority will have to participate in a contract with, with the Thomas Jefferson Planning District. Um, so that's something that the, the broadband authority in a future meeting will, will discuss and probably need to take action on signing that part of the contract. But before that happens, D H C D, the Department of Housing and Community Development, has to sign a contract with TJ PBC and Firefly as a partner.
Before we go too far down, down the weeds on the details of how this all happens, it's probably useful to note that the Rise Project should complete about three years from now.
Right, twenty twenty-five.
And so if you don't have broadband uh, and the broadband definition that was used at the time this contract was put out was a, a minimum of twenty-five uh, megabits uh, down and three megabits up. If you don't have that, this project should be bringing broadband in the form of fiber to your home, to your home sometime over the next three years. And as to what time that is, you're no more interested than I am, because I want the same thing for my home. So we don't have a schedule yet, and that's one of the things our, our partners at Firefly are working on.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, so a couple of things we're keeping our eye on, just to solidify Dominion's work. Uh, we need to stay in touch with Dominion Energy, and we're waiting for D H C D to provide the final contract so that we can work on what our side will be. So any other big question before we can put a schedule out? And from that point, we'll have, hopefully have a, a, a schedule everyone can, can review and look at. Okay. Questions about twenty-two?
Can we move on to the S C C Lumen case?
Yes, sir, will do.
There's a nice link there. You guys gonna put something on our screen?
No, and well, Jason can, but uh, you know, we have essentially been put on hold with this one as well. We're anxiously awaiting the final review of the case, so the S C C, the commission, um, will go through and take a look at the hearing examiner's report. Um, and a per, probably approve the transition. The, the key part of that will be working with the, the commission, the State Corporation Commission, and verifying that all of the additional work that's been um, put into what is called the joint stipulation, that Lumen takes care of that type of work, and for us, it's a significant amount of what is called copper line rehab. So all of the main lines that are, are currently in, in bad shape will be rehab to provide ongoing service for D S L and, and uh, typical landline customers of, of Lumen as part of the transition over to Bright Speed. So I think that's, that's where we stand with that. Um, we really appreciate all of the support that came in from the Board of Supervisors, um, from the community at large. We had over a hundred testimonies really that came through um, from the community. And of course, the broadband authority also sent in a letter that was uh, written into testimony and, and started this process, really. Um, the broadband authority was the first to submit their testimony, and we really thank everyone for, for helping us get to this point. And now the devil's in the details, so during the summer, we, we plan to make sure that Lumen takes care of that, what was written in the joint stipulation. Any questions about that?
If, if I can just add, um, if you, we can distribute it if you'd like, if you have an opportunity um, to review the hearing commissioner's report. Um, it really does a great job of encompassing um, the perspectives that were brought from Almar County, but also the perspectives of a lot of the outlying counties where the uh, the incidence of a, a phone that gets picked up and there's no dial tone in the case of an emergency um, happens even more often um, in some of the outlying counties than it does here. Um, and so it was really uh, quite compelling reading to just have the hearing commissioner sort of uh, summarize all of these events, um, and then describe um, the actions that are laid out in the, in the joint stipulation and the way that they should provide some remedy.
Sounds good. Anything else on that? Any other questions for these guys? Let's chug right along then. Trevor, can you take us through the financial report?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, and it's pretty easy, no changes from last month. The report is on page two of the agenda.
Yep. Pretty self-explanatory, no questions, I trust. All right, moving right along. Uh, the broadband accessibility and affordability report. Mike?
Jason, I'll turn this one over to you, if you want to do it. Unless you want me to.
Just give me one second.
I'll do it, bad timing, um, so I'm unmuted. Okay, one of the big things, we've been working and continue to work on a couple of affordability efforts. Um, the most significant has been attempting to move forward with what is called the Internet Essentials Partnership Program, or I E P P. Uh, Internet Essentials is the affordability project that Comcast has been doing for a while. But what they've done is they established what, what they call their partnership program, and the Almar Cup um, County Public Schools are I E P P Internet Essentials Partnership Program uh, partners, so they actually provide what are typically given as vouchers to Comcast um, customers who, who can't afford the higher tier of the Comcast service, but need it, so they have two or three children at home who are trying to participate in learning and uh, a job that requires them to work from home from time to time, just a lot of combination of things that need to be addressed, and the lowest tier of Comcast has not served them. This is just for internet, connecting to the internet. Um, what the voucher program does is offset their costs, so we're, we're trying to move that program further so that it's equitable, meaning right now, because the schools are, are running it, um, it's only provided to those individuals or homes who have Almar County Public School learners, so even their employees, they can't provide the vouchers for uh, employees in Almar County who are Comcast customers. So our goal was to move that over and have it uh, run through the, the broadband accessibility and affordability office and just transfer the voucher so that our office um, I can just, um, can provide those to anyone who uh, applies for and can receive Comcast Internet Essentials. So that's the first thing, and it, it gets a little confusing about what I'm going to talk about. We've, we've had conversations with both Lumen and Firefly about our next project, and that's called the Affordable Connectivity Plan Program Bridge. So, you know, we, we've updated the board, the Almar Broadband Authority Board about the Emergency Broadband Benefit Program, and that program ended at the end of the year. Um, Congress approved a twenty-dollar reduction in that and called it the Affordable Connectivity Program. And that is only at thirty dollars, where E B B was fifty dollars, and these are per month benefits. So that thirty dollars per month um, change ended up being a twenty-dollar per month loss for the E B B participants. So our thought was move it forward and provide the twenty-dollar bridge so that those people who were receiving the E B B benefit would not see any difference in the amount that they had to pay, or in some cases, it ends up at being no cost, so we're working on getting that together. It's taken a lot of effort on Jason's part, so I really appreciate the work that he's been doing, as well as county attorney and our finance department. They're just working really hard to see if we can get this bridge project together. Um, we learned, uh, I think in February, maybe, maybe in early March, that the state of Maryland is already doing it. Um, so they have come through and they're providing a similar benefit. They chose fifteen, we chose twenty, so we're hoping we can get in there and uh, make some, some good moves to provide higher-end service for our lower-income families. Jason, you want to say anything more about that, if you're available?
Yeah, uh, sorry for the earlier disruption. Um, the, you know, looking at these, at these programs in the last month of activity that we've had around them, there's been a lot of, uh, it felt like there were a lot of highs and lows, a lot of moments where we're like, all right, this is really gonna happen. Oh, wait, we've got this, you know, very difficult challenge that we need to overcome. Um, I think that the big thing about these projects right now is that um, everybody that is on board is on board. Um, we've got uh, service providers that are interested in helping make this happen. We've got precedent from the Maryland um, side, and we've got staff here on finance, D S S, um, and obviously in, in our office, who are all on board, getting this across the line. Um, the question right now for us is just about timing and making sure that we are able to get it um, get it through all of the, the sort of regulatory, regulatory hurdles that we need to make. Um, but like I said on the screen, the two parallel pro, programs, I E P P, um, and A C P Bridge, we're hoping um, that very soon, we're gonna be able to initiate our own I E P P. Um, and then we're also hopeful that by May fifteenth, we will have launched an R F P, concluded an R F P, and be signing M O Us with service providers by May fifteenth. Um, with the goal that anytime after that, as long as the service providers have everything that they need, um, we can be um, issuing these service credits and, and providing this support for low-income households in Almar County um, across a wide variety of service providers. Um, so there's lots of exciting things that are happening in that space, and we're, we're, we're just really glad to be um, supporting these families.
Thank you, sir.
Mike, thank you very much, and Jason, thank you as well. That's a exciting program. Um, a lot going on, a lot of, a lot of things y'all have to take care of, too, in a short timeframe. Uh, moving on to new business, uh, item A, Body twenty twenty-three, we're not even there yet. But uh, what, what does it take to get there? They've, they've started floating some materials out there. Mike, you want to lead us?
Yes, there's a, there's a, the draft guidelines will be out on that other auspicious date, April first, so we will definitely uh, be, be watching for those draft guidelines to come out on April first. Um, then on April seventh, uh, and then again on April nineteenth, there's, there's going to be public input sessions. And right now, those are scheduled to be virtual um, from two to four on four seven, and from twelve to two on four nineteen. And what happens during that is the providers, as well as the localities, have a chance to go back and forth with the H C D and ask questions about the guidelines. Um, the public input on the guideline closes on May second, so by that time, we have to have provided all the input that we can to the, the guidelines themselves. And then on five twenty, the final guidelines will be um, prepared and sent out to everyone. Um, from then, we'd go through the processes that we've gone through many times, it's how to apply, and the applications become due. The, the key thing is, it's similar to, to last year, I think, um, the applications will do around the end of August this year, it'll be August twenty-fifth, and one thing I can say about the, the Virginia Telecommunication Initiative application process is they've never moved the dates around. Um, so once they've settled on dates, they've done an outstanding job, and this is important to me, and so many things, the things change, and with the Virginia Telecommunication Initiative, D H C D has always done an outstanding job of making their dates, sticking to them. And then when it reaches the governor's office, you know, it, it's sometimes they come out early, sometimes they come out late, so we're hoping to know, similar to last year, mid-December, or, or, you know, by the end of the year, um, when awards will be now, announced, so Jason, you got some other great things up there. Um, you know, we're, we're, we're looking at some, some changes that'll allow us to, you know, submit for some very targeted projects, being very specific on, on what types of things we need. Uh, and when it comes to public safety, that's always been a um, a really big emphasis on the broadband authority, as well as working with the, the new office. We do have a public safety focus, you know, if people aren't able to dial nine one one, um, we need to make sure that we're doing everything we can to, to make that ability available to them, whether they're. you know, at their house or for whatever reason, bad luck of being in an accident they couldn't control, et cetera, et cetera. So looking forward to what comes out with 23. Any questions about about that?
Well, I've got some sort of obvious questions we're going to need to address in the interim. Things like, you know, in 2023, do we go after upping all the speeds in the county that are already at the new standard to the new standard? Will that be part of a TJPDC application as we did in 2022? Are we continuing to work with Firefly? Are we looking at other vendors and, you know, further opportunities? I mean, there's there's a lot of things that have to be sorted out in the next five months. So a lot of work to be done there. And I don't propose to answer any of those questions tonight. I think they're just things we need to be thinking of.
Yeah, I think a lot of those answers will come out once we once we see the draft guidelines. I mean, where our direction should be exactly. I agree with you, Chair. It's you know, it's what, a week or week and a half away, we'll see the draft guidelines, and then we can begin a plan for what we want to propose or what the broadband authority wants to propose as changes. So yeah.
To the guidelines.
Right.
And that can be done on an individual basis. We don't need to reconstitute as the, or to steal a word from Trevor, as the broadband authority, we we can do that on an individualized basis. Because often the timeframe for responding may not be congenial to when our next meeting would be. So but if there are silly things in there, then we should let DHCD know that we think they're silly and why. And otherwise, we get get some inkling for where we're going to go four or five months hence. Okay, so that's a.
Questions?
Yes, go ahead, Waldo.
In past years, we knew how much had been allocated by the General Assembly for to support Vadi. Do we know how much funding is available and how much drastically less is it by necessity than Vadi 2022?
It's, I'll answer that question quickly, or however long we want to take on it. I'm sorry. Yes, I think 2022 was the once in a generation funding. A lot of that was because of the American Rescue Plan Act funds that came down. So that was 700 million. We're back to the current budget includes 50 million for for Vadi, and there's a lot of trust that that's going to be approved as is. We don't see that taking a cut during further budget negotiation. So it will be coming out with the 50 million as the potential award. And we'll see, you know, there's still opportunity to say there should be more. But right now it is, it's looking like it's going to be another $50 million a year.
Are we anticipating that the sequential federal funds that are going to be arriving might roll out through the body process? Or and would that be this year, next year, the year following?
Waldo has has an answer similar to mine. I'm a little more optimistic, but I'll let Waldo answer that question because he has a he has a better pulse on what's going on up there.
Given that the FCC has a year from when the the that infrastructure bill passed a few months ago, has a year to prepare maps of eligible areas in each state. Maybe they'll do it faster. I'm not expecting that, and that will determine how much funding is allocated to states, but only to serve those areas. So that will be a further restriction. Who can apply for that funding? Yeah, there's a lot still to be figured out there.
I think one thing we can look forward to is the possibility that the planning grant component is going to we're going to hear about how we're going to have access to the planning grant component of that towards the end of the year. However, that would still be with the expectation that we would apply for those funds spring of next year. And those would be sort of the the tools that we would use to then apply for the the larger fund pool based on those maps that the FCC is going to produce. I wish I could share, I wish I didn't share Waldo's pessimism that they're going to be early. I do think the fall is a possibility, but it would be ideal if there was a full commission and that they they had been working on this for a longer time than they have been, it seems.
And I'll just make the one point here that this if I work for the state, I would consider be considering the messaging challenge of having declared Vadi 2022 as being the source of universal broadband. Okay, then what's the point of any future round of Vadi? Is the acknowledgement, of course, that like it won't actually be universal broadband. There are going to be areas in state that did not get funding and under this, they just didn't provide a compelling proposal, or they didn't propose at all. And then recognition that broadband is by necessity an ever changing standard and that I have broadband at my home, but like it doesn't actually qualify by modern standards. And it occurs to me that that is a I would say a messaging challenge, but a thing that we have to stay on top of as well is that I don't know what point we can ever declare victory, but until everybody has like, I don't know, gigabit, it seems a little tough to be able to say, done, we've solved this. And I think that's something that DHCD will have to navigate as well with future rounds of funding.
Well, we will look forward to future funding, but not this year. Thank you.
Sounds right.
Anything else on Vadi 2023? Any other questions or can we move on? Okay, great. First quarter calendar year 2022 report to the Board of Supervisors. It's still being the first quarter. Yay.
Jason has done an outstanding job working with us to make this a little more clean and less of a less of a long, it's it's it takes a lot of work to put all of this together. So I'm really appreciative of Jason coming in and helping make this less of a chore and more of an enjoyment. So it's great to go back and look at the things that we've done over the last quarter. And, you know, contributions from everybody on the broadband authority are appreciated to to make all of this a reality. We've got a little more time. Sometimes this becomes a rush just because of the timing of our meetings and the requirement that we submit what's called an executive summary into our Board of Supervisors packet. So the I won't go through all the details, but it's a multi-step process to get our executive summary as well as this report on the consent agenda for the Board of Supervisors, and this will show up as a public document on the April 20th consent agenda with the Board of Supervisors. So Jason, you want to quickly walk us through this, or if there are any questions since it's been distributed ahead?
Maybe we could maybe we could resort to questions.
Yeah, it's a.
Yeah, that'd be great.
It's a draft copy right now, and for the public, this will be available. I think almost a week ahead of April 20th. So just watch the Board of Supervisor site, and you'll you'll get a copy of this as final. All right, Jason.
Some any any questions for Mike and Jason? Hearing none? Thank you guys very much for doing this. Looks very professional.
Thanks.
Item 7C, reconstitution. Just it brims with opportunities. Trevor?
Buckhead, you've been anxious to get to this agenda item all day. I can, I know you were talking about it before we even started, so.
For months, I've been anxious to get to this agenda.
It's my pleasure to have a little discussion about what what return to in-person meetings will look like for broadband. Let me, I can't do anything without a PowerPoint. Let me share a screen with you real quick. You guys see my screen?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, so really, this is just a walk for 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 discussion. I hope I can answer questions with authority on on our county's plan to return to in-person meetings. We have met with our Board of Supervisors multiple times, and I've pulled elements of this presentation from that. So Jim and Donna, this is something you guys have probably seen two or three times now, but I thought it would be good to start at broader context on the process, and then we'll zoom into pun intended there, we'll zoom into the the discussion really around what what Abba should expect as we as we come back into in-person meetings. Staff, as we work through this, you know, we're trying to balance multiple elements. You know, a significant one is that upper right corner, which is what what we all have become used to with virtual meetings over the past two years. Now, we're, you know, two years out from declaring local emergency and pandemic and all that. And so part of the work was how do we bring, you know, how 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 do we do it? And how much do we do it? Do we bring in that virtual experience into our meetings as we as we come back into the building? The, you know, the core is our FOIA requirements. There were some some bills at the state level about some potential changes for for boards that had to be seated and where they had to physically reside. The requirements are still the same. So Abba, you know, when when Abba returns, the the board will have to return physically and assemble together in the county building. But but as we as we created a recommendation to our Board of Supervisors, we looked at all of these elements to help put together our best recommendation that we could. That resulted in really a framework, and some have called it tiers of 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 board meetings, but with the with the top group, the legislative bodies, we are we are going full hybrid meetings on those. The boards and commission will again physically be located in our auditorium, but we're going to have the most advanced technology support of those meetings. And so we've referred to those as hybrid from a terminology perspective. The next tier, which is where broadband falls falls under, is is those those boards and committees that are deemed decision-making bodies. We're calling this next tier as virtual access support. And so there was there will still be an ability to remote in virtually to these meetings, but at a less production value as the top tier. And then finally, all the rest will be coming back in person in the old fashioned way, physically assembled, and and will be managing their committees and boards like they did previously. I'll get through this and then and then turn turn my sharing off so I can answer any questions. Virtual meetings, you know, we're experiencing that right now. I don't think I need to talk much more about that. But we all have the ability to interface kind of on an even playing field. Hybrid meeting, it's kind of funny when you bring back pictures from over two years ago, and you see all the people sitting so close together. It is certainly a different time, and it will take a little bit of getting used to again. But this image is to reflect kind of what that that user experience will be. We have Zoom will be our continued technology. We've upgraded our auditorium facilities for for cameras, multiple cameras. And we have we have upgraded our audio visual resources, both both equipment and and people to help manage this meeting. The goal of the the board, the Planning Commission and the School Board meeting is to really have the same experience, whether you're in the in the room physically, up at the podium, or at my desk, and I can zoom in. And so it is highest production value. It is someone manually or I guess, manning the station, if you will, to to help move the focus of the discussion from where the person is. Again, highest production value. And and we'll be first kind of back into into the mix for in-person. I'll talk a little bit about the schedule in a minute. The second tier of meetings is really the one that is relevant for Abba, and it's what we're calling virtual access meetings. This is a meeting type that, again, is for decision-making bodies. Under FOIA, the members of the body will have to physically assemble. But this meeting type would facilitate virtual presentations to the body, virtual public comment and public viewing. The challenge with a virtual access meeting is that the focus of the public body shifts throughout the meeting from the from around the table to the screen and back again. I think we've all experienced this style of meeting through the pandemic, you know, and my own experience has been it's if the room is not set up right, or if there's not intentionality about the in-person people, you have an ability to potentially disconnect from those that are that are zoomed in. And so screen size, positioning, microphone sensitivity, all make these meetings a challenge. And and so we are we are limiting this style of meeting for that next tier. And and we're going to be proposing to hold these meetings in our Room 241 conference room, which which has also received upgraded technology to accommodate, you know, our board meetings for work sessions, et cetera, down the road, but also upgraded to to manage these virtual access meetings through through that same technology. Almost said next slide, and I'm the one advancing. Final one is the old fashioned in-person meetings. Just throwing that out for a reminder what those look like.
I'm amazed how uncomfortable I felt at that picture of those people sitting around the table with no masks on, just visceral reaction.
Yeah, yeah, it's a real thing. Waldo, it is a real thing. We proposed to the board a phased approach where where the legislative bodies would come in first, and and will be coming in next month. Again, we're supervisor, School Board, Planning Commission. We've done multiple dry runs as staff to make sure that this is as successful as possible, and the board will be coming in to do a similar activity before their first meeting, again, to really vet the the technology and experience. The idea is it's kind of a waterfall implementation. Let's get this right. Let's let's let's, you know, spend a month or two on on the hybrids, and then we'll move into the virtual access meeting, which would be next, which was where broadband would come in. And then finally, in-person in-person meetings after that. What drove all of this was our local emergency, which was rescinded last week through action by the board after two years of being in place. I note that on the on the column on the right. We also have a question you may ask is, well, how can how can the authority and how can these other meetings remain virtual? Under our continuity of government ordinance, we're able to remain virtual for all our meetings technically up until 12 months after the the ending of the local emergency. And so again, we're proposing kind of that stepped process. April 4th is is a Monday. That's the date that we marked for for the return to in-person meetings for that first set. It just so happens that that's two days ahead of the the first Board of Supervisors meeting on April the 6th. Tier two, which which would be again, where broadband would come into play. We're projecting June to be our first meeting as an authority in person. We still need to go back to the board and confirm this recommendation, but this is the information that we presented to them back a couple of times in February and March. And then finally, what's that user experience feel like? We, you know, in addition to dry running in the auditorium, staff also has done that in 241 to really get what what it will feel like being in the room as a as a staff support, a public member that would be there in attendance, or one of the board members around the table, as well as what the user on the screen would 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 feel like. And so just a little bit of setup, the entrances to the to the conference room are twofold. There's a kind of a mid midstream midway entrance, and then one at the end. It's not the best picture, but we have screens kind of at both ends of 241. This is where the board previously did most of their work sessions, and it is it is our best conference room space. We have multiple wall jacks for connectivity. We've added cameras to the space. And then the the audio microphone is as an array that was embedded into the ceiling, and it really picks up normal conversational levels at the table. It's been a great improvement in the in the technology. I guess I have animation. We this the middle picture is to kind of portray that that array, which is in multiple spots above the table to be able to pick up the conversation. So you don't need to wear, you know, lapel microphones or any of the the old technology that up until a few years ago, we had to do. And but we also can augment with other audio enhancing devices if we need to. What's it feel like? This was Friday, actually. You might recognize that rather large head to the left of the picture. Unfortunately, I was in the in the picture when it was taken, but this this is to portray kind of what a virtual access meeting would feel like from from the the table. You know, you can you can see the screen to my left in this. You know, you can, you can see the screen to, to my left in this picture. There's also a, a larger screen to my right in this picture. We're presumably will be set around the, the table. Reorganized, I don't think we'll have our back, anyone's back positioned to a screen. But it'll be more of a U shape. I will position that so that the, the, in the room person can, can certainly have line of sight to, to each other and also the screens. And then finally, what's it look like for a person? Again, this is a picture of a laptop, so it's not the best quality picture, but I think it gives you a feel of what a user would see that is, that is virtually attending the meeting. We still, you can see the camera is kind of tilted a little bit. We're gonna, we're working on camera angles and desks set up and whatnot. But it's try to, is to try to optimize the experience for both the in, in the room person, as well as those attending virtually. And that's it. Questions?
That's exciting.
As soon as I can figure out how to stop sharing, I will. There we go. Sorry. Thank you. Questions?
Real quick question. This doesn't, an observer can still come to the room, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. They're not expected to watch on screen. They just
Not expected. We'll have, we'll have chairs set up and just like in the olden days, when, when public used to come in, there will be location for them to sit and participate in observing the meeting or commenting during matters from the public as appropriate.
Assuming things work out, I'll look forward to restarting that in the June timeframe then.
I'll provide an update. Next meeting, we should have, be able to give an update to, but, but I would, I would imagine June is, is where we can circle the, circle the date.
Okay.
At this point.
Very good. Any, any other questions for Trevor?
No, this is good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. As a reminder to everyone, our next meeting is also a Tuesday meeting on April 26th. I think that might finish our suite of Tuesday meetings, but we'll worry about that then. Please make sure it circled on your calendar and it'll still be a Zoom meeting as we all have now learned. So count on that. Are there any other items that we should take up before we adjourn? Bill?
I just want, I, I will not be at the April 26th meeting. That does conflict with the planning commission meeting.
Okay, thank you, Bill. We will replace you in some pitiful fashion, I'm sure.
It will be easy to do.
Any other notes? Then I'll move to adjourn. Is there a second? Thank you, Jim. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? Hearing none, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody. Be well.
Have a good night, folks.
Bye-bye.